Evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the annual town meeting for the Town of Grand Rapids, April 15th, 2014, 7:00 PM. And welcome you all to the meeting. Just an announcement I'd like to make is Bill Clendenning and Kathy Elfer re-elected to this board and will serve another term. I want to congratulate them. First item on the agenda is approve the minutes from the public budget hearing and special town meeting that was held on November 21st, 2013. Your motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget, November 21st.
Motion by Dan, seconded by any citizen, may second, of course, or vote or make the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike Smith. Any discussions on the minutes? Hearing out, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Raise hands, please.
A raise hands in approval. Town residents only, please.
Okay, looks like we got everybody.
Any opposed? Hands are down. All right. Moving to item twos, review of the 2013 financial accounting. And Judy, you gonna take this? This is a review of our audited report.
In your packets, there is a copy of the complete review from our auditing firms with all the details. I'll do a brief review. The 2013 budget that was approved by the town board at the December 11th, 2012 meeting had a revenues of $2,442,883 and expenditures of $2,516,626, which, the way the budget was approved, was to use $73,743 from our general fund. With the revenues and expenditures that we had, we actually only took $11,137 from our general fund. So our cash fund balance on January 1st, 2013 was $805,238. With the $11,137 that came out of the general fund, we ended up, December 31st, 2013, with $794,101 in our general fund. In your packet, too, there's a sheet that says the legal margin of new debt. This is based on the statutes standards of what a town can borrow. Our equalized value of the town is $465,780,300, and the statutory limitation is 5% of that. So that would leave the town able to borrow $23,289,15. Currently, we have $500,000 outstanding debt. We do have a $217,000 that'll be paid off this year, but that would leave us with $22, 789,15 that the town would be able to borrow. Included in our general fund balances, we do have four restricted funds. They're money that, over the years, were set aside for specific projects or reasons. I guess probably more before I started, seven years ago, when the budgets were a little bit easier to balance. And of that, $1,718 is set aside for crime prevention. That money can only be spent for crime prevention because of where it came from. It came from, they called it a MEG unit. It was a drug enforcement unit that the police department was involved with, and this was money that came from there. So that's the only place that it can be used. The other three funds, one is labeled capital purchase, one is labeled fire equipment, and one is contingencies. I guess the way I kind of describe those is like if you had two savings accounts, and one said vacation and one said just savings. If you needed to take that money out of that vacation fund for something else, you could. So even though these are listed as capital purchases, contingencies, or fire equipment, it's still all in our general fund. So as you're looking at the reports, like I said, those can be used anyplace. So that about leaves us...
Any questions?
Any questions?
Go.
Excuse me, on page nine of this report, and the original, the third paragraph from the bottom, is that a correct statement as of December 31st, 2014?
I would think it'd be hard to find that.
I mean, this is from the auditor.
Nope, that's a typo, because they don't audit our books for 2014 until 2015.
To get our money back for the audit?
Yep. Good catch.
Not even high-priced auditors can make mistakes, huh? Any questions? Any other questions about the report, Judy?
Thank you.
I ask reports to come up now. I ask Chris Skinner to come up with the treasurer's report.
Thank you.
That should be following your packet.
Cash on hand, December 31st, 2013, is as follows. We have money in Woodtrust, our checking account, $105,702. We have a repurchase agreement, which is a sweep account, pulls money in and out, back and forth, as we need it in our checking account. We do draw a little interest on that money. There was $423,000 in there. I have a money market at River Cities Bank, $309,950. Our outstanding checks were $45,390, and our fund balance at the end of 2013 was $793,661. Part of 2013's collections was tax money, and that was $4,538,533. Of course, that does get divvied up to the county and everybody else. That's not how much we get to keep. So our total cash on hand was $5,332,195,60. Interest, income, and investments, like I said, I have the sweep account at Woodtrust Bank. The interest we made on that account was $1,579,95. Sadly, that's all we're making on our interest in a lot of areas right now, but River Cities Bank, we have a money market that was paying .07 of 1%. We made $2,556,84. Other interest that came in throughout the year was $679,80. So our total interest income was $4,816. Not like the days when we used to have $30,000, when I first started, but... And starting, I think it was three years ago, the county treasurer, when they pay us our second half of our tax money in August, they no longer pay us uncollected garbage and recycling money. They used to give us all, everything that we had coming to balance our tax roll in August. They do not give us our garbage money anymore, like I said. When they collect it, they will pay it to us, and they do collect interest on that, and we do get the interest as well. So as of 2000, in 2013, we did collect delinquent garbage money, garbage and recycling money of $72,77. Part of that was for 2011, and that was $7,800, and part of that was for 2012, and that was $71,95. So we still have $15,054 of uncollected garbage and recycling money that has not been paid by residents, so we have not received it on our end yet either. And that will continue for this year's taxes. If they're not paid, that number's going to increase. In 2013, we paid $151,707 in loans, and as of December 31st, our current debt was $711,774. And that concludes my report. Unless there's any questions.
I've got one. Have you explored any options to increase your yield for interest?
Well, I'll tell you why I do what I do. Right now, in order to get even a percent of interest on a CD, you need to leave your money invested for over one year. And we don't like to do that as a municipality, because we like our funds to be liquid in case we need them. So I was, and Woodtrust Bank is a convenient bank for us to bank with, being that it's right next door, and when it is tax season, I do go back and forth quite a bit. They do waive our fees, all fees, for any type of sweeping back and forth money into our checking account to pay our bills every month and for our payrolls that we do, and they do not charge us for any ACH transfers back and forth. Things like that is a very convenient place to bank and is inexpensive to us. So we do keep our money there, and that repurchase account does gain us a little interest, like I said, and that money's available all the time, which is why I do that. And I did take some money over to River Cities, because their money, just so we don't have all of our money in one bank. And they're, when I started putting money over there, I think we were getting, I think around 2.75 or 3% interest, and of course, that has decreased over the last three or four years, but it is a safe place to keep it. If anybody has any suggestions, my door's open, but I'm just trying to keep our money safe and to avoid fees for the town, too. I mean, it isn't easy to bank, so...
Any further questions? With that, thank you very much, Chris.
You're welcome.
Next, first to Don Bowlen.
Good evening, town residents. Grand Rapids Fire Department for the year 2013 had a very busy year. The department responded to 305 calls for service. We responded to 40 fire calls in the Town of Grand Rapids, 24 calls in the Town of Grant, 19 calls in the Town of Saratoga, and 26 mutual aid calls to varying neighboring communities, whether it be the city of Wisconsin, Rapids, Bearden, Rudolph, all the areas that come and help us when we need help. That's quite common. The Grand Rapids First Responder Program was called out, it was 196 of the calls. First Responder Program became a very important part of the services the Grand Rapids Fire Department offers to the citizens. Since the first responders were initiated in 2008, neither the town nor United Ambulance Service has incurred any back injuries. Back injuries are very prevalent in medical transports. We provide a lot of the manpower that's needed to get patients in and out of the houses. It's, you know, especially in the full-time departments and things, back injuries are major expenses, liability on the workman's comp. Since we've had this, we've had the manpower necessary to safely operate the system, and neither agency's had a back injury. Hopefully, that stays that way. But I guess, you know, that's just one of the secondary things that helps the town out. The initial thing is the initial patient care that people receive. When they call, chances are, you're going to see a first responder come to your door first. They're going to be the first ones there. Either a police officer or one of our fire department first responders are there, they find your house, get initial patient care treatment, give an information to the ambulance service so we can assist you when, you know, when we do get called out. And like I say, that was 196 calls that we responded to, just in the Town of Grand Rapids. And then we also did have mutual aid calls on the first responder side into the Town of Grant, and actually, I think, a couple into Saratoga. So that program is very active. Some days, a lot more active than we'd like to have it, but we do always try to respond. Fire department is currently staffed with 53 members. It sounds like a lot of people, and tell you, factor in that almost every member of the fire department has a full-time job elsewhere. Or, you know, we have a few people that are retired, but our active frontline firefighters are almost predominantly full-time employed somewhere else. That's what, you know, the volunteer service is about, and that affects us in numerous ways. One thing that's the biggest change to the industry is, we don't have very many people that work shift work anymore. When I got in the department 25 years ago, three-quarters of the department either worked at the Bearden Mill, the Nacousa Mill, the Port Edward Mill. Now we have very, a handful. Predominantly, we're turning into a day shift, working citizenry, and we're not getting the volunteers that are available on the day shift as much as we'd like. So if anybody's interested, has time, especially during the day, we're more than help, you know, willing to look at people. We still have, we have retirees, we have some people that are still working shift work, but, you know, it's a struggle for us, and we're no different. Every other department in the world is struggling with the same things. Society just doesn't volunteer as much as they used to. So, you know, we are currently staffed all right. We did get another application this afternoon, so, you know, it is, we still see people coming in, stepping up, and volunteering to help the town. I guess the town board has authorized the fire department to start looking into the replacing of our, it's called Ladder 1, it's our aerial unit that we have in place. We are starting the process. It's a quite lengthy process of looking through what it takes to build these fire trucks, and hopefully, it's something that's going to service the town for, you know, hopefully another 30 years. The aerial truck is something that a lot of people don't realize the value of it. It allows us to safely work up on the roofs, above structures, when we have major fires. It allows us to do a lot of things safely, that there are volunteers, when you think about it, they all have a wife, they all want to go home. The last thing we want to do is have somebody get seriously injured. If we do, it's going to start affecting the membership. You know, people want to know that if they're coming to volunteer to help the town out, we're doing everything we can to provide them the best opportunity to do a very dangerous task safely. So we are looking into replacing that truck. Like I say, it's on a, you know, all these trucks are on a schedule of replacement. We don't, you know, we probably replace a truck, you probably buy three or four cars over the course of the time that we keep a truck for. So if we shoot for 20 to 25 years, this truck is nearing the end of its life, and we are looking into replacing that. And I guess the other part of it is, you know, we do service our two neighboring townships. We service the Town of Grant and a third of the Town of Saratoga. We get paid very well by the two communities for providing the service to them, and it's part of our commitment to them is that we will maintain a well-staffed and a modern fire department, that we can service and stay as a volunteer service. It's by far the most efficient operation, you know, probably about 70% of the country is covered by volunteer fire departments. If that ever changes, you'll definitely see the ripple down effect of that. So with that, I guess, like I say, we still are doing all of our normal fire prevention stuff. We do have our Easter egg hunt this after Saturday over at Midstate Technical College, a nice event, community event, sponsored by all the businesses in the area that go into that. Fire department's been doing that for, I think this is the 47th year, if I remember right. Stop on out for that, and we also are going to be having our fireman celebration again this year, June 22nd, at the Lions Club, so look forward to the community's support of that event also.
Any questions of the fire chief?
I got one. Don, have you ever considered opening up for volunteers from the townships that we serve?
We have a bunch of people in the town, from the Town of Saratoga already. We probably have six or eight that live in the city of Rapids. Yeah, we don't have a residency requirement anymore. We'll, you know, we try to keep it within a four-mile radius of the department, and that's strictly per response time. You know, if they're coming from an extended distance, by the time they get here, sometimes it's a nutrition, but no, we'll accept anybody, you know. Typically, this side of the Wisconsin River, we try to keep on this side, just so...
Do you have members now on the fire department that are from outlying communities?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've got, at four, four or five, for sure, in our coverage area of Saratoga. Town of Grant...
Three for sure.
Three for sure. So, yeah, we do get...
Six or eight in the city.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, we have quite a few from the city of Wisconsin Rapids, so, no, we'll look at anybody that's willing to have a very interesting hobby.
Any other questions for him? Thank you very much. The chief of police report, Mel Pedersen, is at an incident right now. It's been an extended event, and Judy's, we'll give you, or Kathy's going to give you the update. Kathy's going to give you his update.
I think I got this from Public Safety. Everyone has a report from Police Chief Peterson. The Grand Rapids Police Department has gone through some personal changes over the last year. Officer Jeremy Anderson became full-time officer in April of 2013. He joined the department from part-time ranks. Officer Dave Drinkwine was promoted to sergeant in May 2013. Shortly after that, in July, Chief Dave Lewanduski had retired, and Officer Drinkwine had filled in as acting chief of police for the retirement, until Chief Peterson had reported for duty as our chief of police on January 13. The Grand Rapids Police Auxiliary continues to excel since the program's implementation. The police chief describes how the auxiliary officers work hard at fundraisers to be self-funded and of little cost to the taxpayers. They are a great asset to the department and the Town of Grand Rapids in general. The auxiliary is a volunteer organization that helps out at various special events in and around the town. They are trained for specific tasks at special events, which greatly enhance the effectiveness of Grand Rapids Police Department, and acts as a force multiplier in the event. The auxiliary donated over 707 hours, and within the packet, the police chief describes how those hours broke down and was involved in 25 events, and he lists the events that the auxiliary participated in. He notes that the Grand Rapids Auxiliary is always looking for and recruiting highly motivated individuals to join the dedicated group. So if anyone knows of somebody who is interested in joining the auxiliary, please have them stop by or call the Grand Rapids Police Department for more details. The police chief goes on to report that a new squad car was added to the fleet, a 2013 Dodge Charger, replacing the 2007 Ford Crown Vic. At the end of the calendar year in 2013, we have five squad cars in the department. A 2003 GMC Yukon with approximately 87,000 miles, a 2011 Chevy Tahoe with 62,041 miles, a 2009 Dodge Charger with about 113,863 miles, a 2010 Dodge Charger with 70,752 miles, and a 2013 Dodge Charger with 11,105 miles. The department remains busy protecting the citizens of Grand Rapids. He does provide a breakdown, I think, yes, of the types of calls that the department has been involved with. The police department handled 4,279 calls for service in 2013 compared to 4,167 calls for service in 2012, which is a 2%, 2.6% increase in the number of calls. So on behalf of the officers, the staff of the Grand Rapids Police Department, the police chief welcomes any questions or concerns you have and looks forward to serving you in 2014. Any questions that I can answer? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Larry Giles is our building inspector, zoning administrator. The report will be given by the resigned, my head one?
No. I'm sure he didn't think about that, he's not here.
Yeah. Jim Scott's going to take the report for us. Thank you very much.
No, where is he? I thought planning and zoning.
Who's doing planning and zoning?
We didn't know Larry wasn't coming, so guess who might have to do that?
I can.
Hey, we hope somebody volunteers.
You bet.
Oh, Jimmy's doing the planning and zoning for us.
Yeah, this one's the...
Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator Report.
Yes.
Too many departments.
Good evening, residents. This is the report from Larry, the Building and Zoning Department Annual Report. I haven't had a chance to actually look at this report, so I am going to read it word verbatim. The mission of the Building and Zoning Department is to enforce building and zoning codes to protect the life and safety, enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Grand Rapids. These goals are accomplished through enforcement of construction, electrical plumbing, and HVAC codes for residential building. Department staff receive applications for permits, review plans to ensure compliance with applicable codes and local ordinances. Issue permits for construction and perform instructions, inspections to ensure work is performed in compliance with applicable code provisions and local zoning ordinances. Enforcement of the town's zoning codes is also a function of the department. Application for permits is reviewed for compliance with provisions of the zoning for all districts in the town to verify the desired use and occupancy is allowed in the district. Staff also performs investigations and responds to complaints to ensure activities other than construction are not in violation of the zoning codes. The department also enforces other town ordinances, such as housing number displays, town building codes, the use of portable storage containers, and land subdivision. As the zoning administrator, Larry, also designed as the secretary to the plan commission, providing background information and maps, taking minutes, maintaining records and files, and following up on the decisions of the plan commission. You can visit the website, thetownofgrandrapids.org. New building permits, excuse me, new home building permits total 13 in 2013, up from 10 in 2012. The average value of a new home in 2013 was $271,076 versus $211,500 from 2012. In 2013, we issued permits for commercial projects, which include one permit for a new building for a massage and photography business, two permits to Midstate Tech, one to remodel a bookstore, and one for building a fire training tower; one permit for an extension of a permit for a mini storage building; three permits for lumber storage buildings at Golden Eagle Log Homes; two permits for removing cabins at the Girl Scout Camp; three permits for fences on commercial properties. We also issued permits for work on residential property, which included 28 remodeling and addition to homes, 34 accessory buildings, such as a shed, a detached garage, permits including additions to them, two swimming pool permits, and three permits to rezbuild. The total number of permits issued was 261, which include many minor permits, such as furnace replacements, electrical upgrades, et cetera. The total permit fee revenue was $17,900, down from $22,308 in 2012, and approximately a total value added by permitted project was $5,021,339. Respectfully, Larry Giles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Again, any questions I may not be able to answer.
All right, now we're back on track, and Jim Scott, chairman of the plan commission, will give the plan commission report.
Good evening, citizens. The Town of Grand Rapids Plan Commission is comprised of seven residents of Grand Rapids who are appointed to serve on the board for three-year terms. Two of the members are appointed to officer positions, chairman and vice chairman, and those are only one year, but may be renewed by reappointment of the town chairman. 2013 board chairman was Arnie Neistrom until April 23rd, 2013, when as town chairman, he appointed Jim Scott as chair of the commission, Patty Lumby to a three-year term as member, and Tom Arnold to another one-year term as the vice chairman. This board meets the second and fourth Monday of every month in the Town of Grand Rapids Municipal Building, providing there are ample items on the agenda. The Plan Commission was created to consider rezoning requests, conditional uses, ordinance violations, text and map amendments, land divisions, consistency between the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, and the official map and various other planning, zoning, and building-related issues. The public meeting starts at 6:00 PM. The seven Plan Commission board members are identified above on the report. In 2013, there were 13 Plan Commission meetings held to hear various items on the agendas. Town ordinances were reviewed, and recommendations were made to the town board on various chapters. 2013 agenda items that were present, presented to the Plan Commission were four dog exemption requests to have three or more dogs, seven land use permit requests the Plan Commission issues for commercial buildings, four conditional use permit applications, five certified survey map reviews, and one rezoning of property request. And you can see our website there, respectfully submitted by Tim Scott. Are there any questions about the Plan Commission? Are there any questions about the Plan Commission?
There are nothing. Again, I want to thank Jim for his service. He's stepping down from the Plan Commission and, and again, I truly appreciate your service. Thank you.
Well, it's been a pleasure serving. I really enjoyed it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, the Recycling and Solid Waste Committee Report normally given by Bill. Bill's voice is gone. Patty has volunteered to step up again. Voice on vacation, Bill, or?
Yes.
Good evening. Um, the committee members for the Recycling and Solid Waste Committee was appointed by Arnie Char- Arnie, our Chairman, Nystrom, were supervisors, Bill Glenn Danning, myself, Patty Lumby, and the town resident, Carol Davis. The three committee me- there were three committee meetings that were held this last year, and the Town of Grand Rapids approved a contract on November 11, 2008 with Veolia, which is now called Advanced Disposal. The town is currently under a one-year extension as provided for in the November 11, 2008 contract for the residential waste and recyclable material collection. The contract is available for view at the town, at the Town Municipal Building, and um, the, the new contract that will be coming up this year will be able to be viewed on the town's website. A few highlights of the current contract are included in this report, which I will read below. Complaints. The contractor shall receive and respond to all complaints regarding services provided under the contract. Any complaints received by the town will be directed to the contractor's office. Should a complaint go unresolved for longer than two days, the town will have a right to demand an explanation or resolution to its satisfaction. Holidays. The following holidays will be observed by the contractor: New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Collection of waste and recyclables will be one day late during the week of a holiday for collection, days following on or after the holiday. In 2013, the contractor, Advanced Disposal, built the town $349,306. Each of the 3,048 residential units paid $115 per year for curbside pickup of recyclables and solid waste. And below or on this report is a breakdown of tons and pounds of the recyclables of newspaper, corrugated mixed paper, aluminum containers, steel and bimetal commingled and glass containers. Solid waste in 2013, a total of 2,059 tons, um, compared to 2,151 tons in 2012 went to the landfill. The average waste per capita for the town equates to 537 pounds, which is a decrease of 4.3% from the previous year. Total recyclables in 2013, and this is something that our group is very proud and we as residents should be very proud of, in 2013, a total of 512 tons compared to 455 tons in 2012 were collected and recycled by the contractor, and this was an increase of recyclables of 12.5% from the preceding year. The population used for this report was 7,677 residents. The average weight of recyclables per capita is 133 pounds. This exceeds the state standards of 106 pounds per capita by, by 26.88 pounds. In 2013, two Choose to Reuse events were held at the town garage, and they were very successful with hundreds of items brought in, including furniture, clothing, bicycles, books, lawnmowers, and more. Oil and battery tire collections ran concurrently on these dates, and they were also well utilized. Collected were 200 gallons of waste oil and 2.3 tons of waste tires. These collections, again, will take place in 2014, and our next Choose to Reuse event will be May 17th, and also will have a fall event, but that date will be determined. Members of the Town Graham, Town Board and the Recycling Solid Waste Committee continue to participate with citizens for a clean, green, and welcoming community. This local grassroots group promotes environmental education, recycling, conservation efforts, and provides the opportunity for residents from throughout the Great, Greater Southwood County to meet and share the ideas and undertake different projects. For more information, you can go to facebook.com/cleangreenwr. In addition, recycling committee members have been communicating with Wisconsin DNR officials, who are very interested in the successful collaborative Choose to Reuse efforts and the work of the Clean Green Group in general. Presentations for these efforts were given to the DNR recycling staff in May of 2013 and also in October of 13. These officials traveled to Apaca to present the Choose to Reuse program to the Wisconsin County's Solid Waste Management Meeting. This awareness may lead to future grant opportunities for the Town of Grand Rapids, respectfully submitted by the Recycling and Solid Waste Committee. And I also want to note too that, um, did you know that it costs the town less money per ton to recycle than it does, than it costs to dispose of solid waste? So please keep recycling. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question for Bill or Patty. Just actually, it's not really a question, it's maybe an opportunity for either of you to add to. Some residents have asked if the Choose to Reuse is costing the town money, so do you want to comment or elaborate on it? I know Bill has answered that before, but here's a good opportunity to explain further.
No, it does not cost the town any money. Uh, we, we, we get paid no per DMs. Our volunteers, our course volunteers, including myself and anybody else on the committee, we do it all by volunteers. No money exchanged, only for tires. And we help out the ODC with the televisions and the electronic equipment. And I just want to tell you about this year's is the televisions are going to be 26-inch and below are going to be $10. Anything above 26-inch monitors and all is going to be $25. And maybe by fall or maybe by next year, it'll be 50 and 100, so. And there's just no market now for those TVs and, uh, it just looks like municipalities and counties are going to have to help out on some of this, but you'll want to come to these Choose to Reuse that are there. They're in the town of Saratoga also and other communities. The town of Grant has them, and the town of Seneca also has it, so please participate in it, and we do need, and we do need volunteers. We can get some volunteers.
Patty, anything to add? Did Bill do a fine?
Bill always does a fine.
All right. All right, I'm municipal. Oh, I'm sorry.
Question, Arnie.
Go.
And I, maybe Judy can better answer this, but you indicated that we have a number of residents in the township that are not paying for your garbage and recycling collection?
The.
It could be that the home was foreclosed on or those type of things.
And what are we doing? What, what tools do we have to try to collect that money?
I can answer that.
Go ahead, Chris.
Were you basing that off the information I gave you on my report, that they're not paying?
I, I thought Judy gave it, but that's mine.
Their, their garbage and recycling charge is part of their first installment of their taxes, so they're not paying their taxes either.
Okay.
So we don't, if we don't get their tax, if we, if they don't pay their taxes, the 115 comes out of the first installment, we don't get that either. The county treasurer will give us the tax money at settlement time, so we have all of our money to use for the year, but not the garbage and recycling money. They quit doing that three years ago. There's, there's really nothing I can do. They do all the collecting at the county level. They send out all the notices, they charge all the interest, they keep track of how many years they haven't paid, and then they, they do, you know, whatever necessary means after five-year point or whatever it is they, I don't know if they, you know, what happens, but.
So are we billing that as a special assessment?
Yes.
Yes.
Special charge.
So what we could probably technically do is obtain a list of those properties and cut them off.
I have a list of those properties. Um, I don't know if we want to do that, though.
You have to provide, you have to provide curbside picking.
Yeah.
You have to. You can't let the garbage out there.
Right.
So we.
Other than this.
Too long a charter, we just need the, the county to continue to do their work. If people are not paying our taxes, eventually it'll go to step number two, three, or four.
Right.
And by step five, we finally get reversed. Anything else? Not, uh, we'll move to the municipal court report. Judge is not here. Uh, Judy will follow that.
Our municipal court is a joint municipal court with the town of Saratoga. Your Joint Municipal Court has concluded the ninth year of service to the citizens of the towns of Grand Rapids and Saratoga. 2013 saw further statutory changes affecting municipal courts, which have been to the benefit of the towns through increases to fees retained by the towns and the authorizing the pass-through of costs to those convicted of violations of ordinances. Chief Lewandowski left in place a skilled staff with seamlessly continued competent and compassionate responses to the Grand Rapids needs. Chief Peterson is welcome to add his contributions to the welfare of the citizens of the town. Constable Ryan, who is the Constable of Saratoga, addressed Saratoga's concerns for the common needs of its citizens. Overall, the court system has been refined and functions efficiently and professionally. Attached is information compiled by the clerk's office, tracking the imposition and collection of forfeitures by the court. I see 2014 as continuing the achievements of the past years and the continued service to our communities, and appreciate the opportunity to serve the court and our residents. Honorable David L. Brace. The breakdown, um, there were 601 citations, adult citations issued in 2013. Seventeen juvenile citations. Of those four were underage drinking. Saratoga had 21 adult citations issued. The gross collections of the municipal court was 74,520. Grand Rapids keep, got to keep 41,600. There is a portion of all fines and forfeitures that are collected that has to be sent to the state and also to the Wood County. Um, so that's where the other 33,000 ended up being split, split out. Tax Intercept, 4,400 collected. For those of you that don't know what Tax Intercept is, if you have an outstanding fine and you get money back from the state for your income taxes, we get our money first. We have a computerized system set up throughout the state. We joined it, uh, two years ago, I believe it was, or three years ago, where when we have outstanding fines that people aren't paying, um, our court clerk, which is Jewel Ninaman, uh, goes in and she enters the information in and it's kept in there. Tax Intercept collects, um, outstanding child support. There's various things that they will take out, and there's a certain order that it comes out, but our fines do come back to us before people get their incomes, their state taxes back. So we did collect $4,400 of, of our fines that way. Um, since the, the beginning of the municipal court, there has been 734,142 dollars that have been collected through fines and for citations. Outstanding as of this, as of, oh, outstanding since the beginning is $99,000. So people must not be getting much of their income tax money back. We, sometimes we only get a portion of what the fines are, but. Might be able to answer some questions if somebody has any?
I've not seen any. Thank you. Uh, Gilley, do you have a Board of Appeals report and a Sanitary District report for us?
Yeah. It's a quick one. We don't have anything fancy for a report here because basically we need one of these added meetings this year. The Grand Rapids Sanitary District, no meetings. For those of you that aren't aware, the Sanitary District is only a portion of the township, about two-thirds of the total township. Sanitary District does have taxing authority by statute. We haven't done that since back in the early eighties, I believe. The money that we have on hand, we're just kind of holding that in contingency, uh, if we need it for anything. The city pretty much put a stop to the Sanitary District providing any sanitary services because the DNR said that if we were to have sanitary service in the township, we had to do it through the city. The city said, fine, we'll provide it, put you annex first. So we're at a catch 22 with that. Legally, we can use the money that we have remaining for drainage projects, so if we have any serious drainage issues within the township, we can address them through the Sanitary District. Those of you that may have known our former town treasurer, Jan Sager, I've been working with her the last few days. Jan's had some real serious health issues, but our current balance as of this time, money held in the bank, $28,884. And we are earning interest on that, and we had no expenditures last year. I'll move on to the Board of Appeals. Board of Appeals pretty much goes hand in hand with any building permits that we have in the township. The more building permits, typically the more appeals that we get. We only had 13 building permits in the township last year. Couple that with our current zoning administrator being a little stricter with the zoning regs, so again, no meetings for the Board of Appeals. Any questions on either? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the report part of it. Yes, Bill?
Is, is there a chance since we give $15,000 to the, in main society, maybe on the next, require them to have a report? I, I think it'd be good to put a, for an annual report from them once, is that possible or?
Well, they do give us, us an annual report, but I guess we don't present it. It's a quarterly report.
Quarterly report.
Having, what we could be doing is putting the results of that quarterly report to our webpage if it would be some format that we could do that. Uh, you know, basically the, this town meeting is structured around town committees or officials, so it's really not technically, but I'm not saying that it's not, that it's impossible to ask another entity to provide a report, but.
And I say in the same thing with Reggie, because we give them over $7,000. It'd be nice to get a report from them and their accomplishments.
Sure. When, we could possibly address that in an, in an economic development report that we could do in the future.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item four, set compensation elect officials that hold office in April 2016 under Wisconsin Stat 16.32. The idea was to, a number of years ago, it was to equalize board members' pay so one board member that comes on in one year, and a board member comes on the next year, their pay equals the same. So by identifying two years out, in this case, 2016, what his wages are going to be than those that are elected, uh, and alternate years are all under the same wage package or compensation, which, as you can see on the, uh, currently, myself, the chairman, currently, myself, the chairman, will earn three hundred dollars and sixty dollars for a meeting. All supervisors are hundred and forty dollars and fifty-five dollars for meetings. So we're open to conversation from the public. And if somebody wishes to generate a motion, then the motion could be to leave it the same, or the motion could be increased, it's entirely up to you. We work for you, as they say.
Make the motion to leave it the same.
And the names for the records, please?
Ron Hett.
And the second one was by? Tom?
Tom?
Is there any discussion on the motion to keep it the same? Yes, Mr. Ron Hett?
Thank you. So I was the guy that made the motion to make the change from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, I believe Gil seconded it. And back then, that amounted to seven tenths, that, that, that figure, the total compensation for the supervisors and the chairman, the board, not the benefits, but just the compensation, the per diems and the salary, was seven, seven tenths of a percent of our budget. I just figured it out again this evening, or this afternoon, and the total compensation, budgeted compensation is about a little over twenty-eight thousand bucks. That's not a lot of money for the work they do. Our total budget is about two point eight million dollars. So we went from seven tenths of a percent to one percent. And, and, and so I purposely struggled with, do I make a motion one way or the other? And I decided during moot on that. I, just about every supervisor or person on the board I talked to seems to be kind of happy with where they're at. And of course, they wouldn't probably say, hey, I really want more money, you know? Hey, they do a wonderful job, though, I'll tell you. And, you know, but we had, in this last election, we had, you know, I knew three of the candidates running and, you know, they, they were just wonderful candidates we had, you know? It, it, it's a service of love, I think. I surely wouldn't vote against a motion to increase that to something.
Any other discussion, any other discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll call for a show of hands as an a's to leave it the same. Those in favor, raise your hand by saying aye. And you are allowed to vote. No?
Larry Cruz. We're the same? Okay, I'm missing one, is all.
Okay.
I understand.
Yes.
All right, the wage, wages remain the same in two thousand?
The nose?
Ah, the nose, I'm sorry.
I didn't vote for the missing one.
Okay, we're okay. All right, we're going to move to item five, which is a request to amend the highway expenditure totals to a new total of one million, two hundred and thirty-four dollars, six hundred and twenties, six hundred and twenty dollars. Now, let me give you just a little bit of background so you, so you understand. Highway expenditures has to be capped. We have bought a grader, that is a piece of highway equipment. So that purchase of that grader, even though it's not going to be paid for until the next five years, because of the purchase of that goes against the highway cap, okay? So we would be exceeding our highway cap unless we just about totally didn't do any roadwork. We have roads, work that needs to get done. If we choose not to raise the cap to the, to the request of limit that I'm proposing to you, we would have roughly fifty thousand dollars to do roadwork. We did not do any roads other than Town Line Road next year, or last year, excuse me. Those payments start next year, that's approximately a hundred and forty thousand a year for the next years. We had a two hundred and eleven thousand dollar note out that's being paid off. So we're replacing that note with a hundred and forty thousand dollar note and a greater note of, I believe it's thirty-five thousand or forty?
Yeah, it'd be right around forty.
Forty.
Right around forty thousand. So instead of having, next year, my projected is to have loans of a hundred and eighty thousand versus two hundred and forty thou, two hundred and seventeen thousand last year. So what I'm saying to you, even by raising this cap up, we, we will maintain a level, in all likelihood, a level tax rate that we've been able to do for the number of years. By staggering purchases that we need, and the grader was a nineteen ninety-one, if I haven't told you that, so it was well overdue to be replaced. By staging and stacking the loans out, we maintain a relatively flat and stable rate for the township. Now, I can't tell you what this, what the county, the state, and the school districts are going to do. But I can tell you, in all the years that I've been on the board, we've been able to maintain a relatively stable rate by doing that. So that's why we have suggested that we raise our cap to a million, two thirty-four, six twenty, and that will allow us to continue to do the roadwork that we want to do this year. Now, questions that I didn't answer? Fred?
Ernie, the roadwork that you just wanted to do this year, do you have an idea of what that's going to cost?
We have, well, we would use our entire road budget, whatever we have, which was three hundred thousand, but I believe we used forty already.
Yeah.
So we have two hundred and forty thousand right now to do roadwork, and we could find enough roadwork that really needs to be done to spend that. And that's about what we've been doing every year, except last year when we did the huge Town Line.
You took the money from the roadwork and put it against Town Line, wasn't it?
Yeah, and then we had to borrow some, borrow a part of it because it, it was a substantial project.
But do you have projects in, in mind for this year?
We have projects that we didn't fulfill last year because we didn't do them. Those are going to, if this approves, we need to reprice those and find out where we are for it because we had last year's oil and Philly rates. So we do know at least some of the projects that we're looking for. And if we approve this, we likely will be able to do all of them and possibly even some more.
Did, did you consider taking part of the road budget, like pay for half of it on the road budget and then finance the other half? Was it a possibility?
Can I?
Go ahead, Judy, if you want to.
Okay, just so that you're clear on this.
Okay.
It doesn't matter where the money is coming from. It doesn't matter if the grader money would have come out of the general fund compared to a loan. It has, makes no difference of where the money's coming from. What it is, is on paper, we cannot spend through all of these categories. It doesn't matter where the money comes from. If you guys do not approve the one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand tonight, they cannot do the road projects because it would put us over the cap because the grader is being purchased.
Purchased this year, it's not paid for this year. And, and that still throws the cap number up, or that's why, in, in technical terms, it doesn't seem quite right because we're not paid for until next year. But we have to follow the rules that's presented to us, and that is that the cap is a cap. Gil, you had your end?
Yeah, I, I'm okay with raising the cap, but I, just a clarification here, Ernie. If I'm gathering this right, in order to stay under our cap, it's in our best interest to borrow the money for major purchases like.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter where the money comes from.
But, but if we were to pay for the grader flat out in one year, we'd either exceed the cap or not be able to do any roadwork.
Whether, whether it's paid for, whether it's paid for in one year, if it's paid for in ten years, it's purchased this year.
Correct.
So that number has to go into the highway expenditure numbers. And in, the only way to stay under the one million, fifty thousand that was approved in November is to not do road construction. One million, fifty thousand was approved at the November meeting. So in order to do any road construction over fifty thousand dollars, the cap has to be raised.
Does, but does the cap have to be raised the whole hundred and eighty-four?
Yes.
Yeah. Otherwise, otherwise, otherwise we'd have to cut back on maintenance.
To have the three hundred thousand.
We ought to have.
If you don't, right, if you don't amend it to the proposed amount, then there will be less road construction by that difference.
Then you only get two hundred thousand for roads or whatever, okay.
Yes.
Gil again?
But Judy, I think my question here maybe is, it's helping to explain to everybody here. It's in the town's best interest to borrow money for capital improvements to spread that purchase out over a number of years, correct? So that the, the amount that we budget for a new grader, instead of being all in one year, it's in several years. And that way we stay under the cap, correct?
It will, it will have no effect on the cap next year.
We're always going to have.
Even the borrowed money, the payment will not affect the borrow, the cap because it's purchased this year.
Okay, I, I understand where you're coming from now. The, the cap for highway expenditures is five thousand dollars per mile of town roads. So this, the cap is actually five hundred thousand dollars, which is only half of what we spend through these categories. So in order to exceed that cap at the November meeting is when we have to have the town approval in order to exceed the five hundred thousand that we would be capped at. So now, because in November, the residents voted and passed the one million and fifty thousand, that is now our cap. But otherwise, at the November meeting, if the motion hadn't been set, then we wouldn't have done anything, we wouldn't plow roads all winter. So that's, I, I got where you're coming from now, okay?
Why didn't you raise it then or did we only hear the grader now?
Well, it just decided, once, once the crew started using it this year, the deficiencies really started to show up. Engines started to get weaker, the thing just deteriorated really quick. And it's a nineteen ninety-one, so it's been around a long, long time. And the crew went out, researched a, and found us a one-year-old model, or actually two-year now, two thousand and twelve model, that only had five hundred and some hours on it. So we got a relatively new unit, very nice unit, global, and it'll be delivered roughly around May fifteenth. Mike, there's somebody else, did anybody have anything over here? I thought I saw a hand over here, Mike?
I just wanted to say, you know, you look at, that's a ninety-one unit, how many people have ninety-one cars left that, I mean, you're using it today for a purpose? You know, so I mean, it is an important part of, stuff wears out. So I mean, you look at, it's a pretty good deal when you're thinking that, we got that much use out of that and that thing's on the road all winter long and, you know, all the time, so, just a thought.
Shirley, got a question?
Yeah, the amount of money that we got back from the state, the three hundred and eleven sixteen, or whatever thousand, whatever it is. Anyways, did that, is, did that go back into the highway expenditure budget?
No, it, it may not, it has to go into general funds.
Even though it was for?
Exactly right, even though it was a road, it has to go into general funds. And that's what revenue, when you saw in, in the budget meetings, you saw revenue of three hundred some dollars and that was the, the payment back to us for it. So it goes into general funds. So in reality, we, in, in the budget process, we're actually moving it, but it doesn't get designated that way.
So on this highway expenditure sheet here, you're, and, and now it shows that you have to spend, we have to pay another forty thousand for Town Line Road?
That was the final payment, right?
That was the final payment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the culvers are twenty-five thousand? So then this leaves you with two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, correct, to do roads?
Mm-hmm.
If the highway expenditures is increased to this amount, that's what it leaves, yes? If not, fifty thousand.
We'll have two hundred and thirty-five to spend, thousand to spend on the roads if you, if the citizens approve the new cap. It's not affecting this year's, but in taxes, it's not affecting, affects yet next year's taxes, but it equals them out because we will not be, our debt service will be less than the preceding year. So it's realistic. Gil?
With that, Ernie, I think you guys got things pretty well in hand here. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the increase to one million, two thirty-four, six twenty, as requested.
Is there a second? Mr. Rick Austin? Now we'll go into other discussions, is there other discussions on that to wish to address it? Hearing none, to show in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, aye?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, I'm seeing eight hands not up, okay?
Those opposed, raise your hand. That's correct?
Yep.
Motion as carried, thank you very much. Move to item six, which is transact any business authorized by statutes, which basically is a lot of stuff that you want us to buy land, sell land, whatever, but is there anything that you as citizens wish us to be pursuing? Water parks, you name it.
Tax rates, Phil.
Mr. Hett?
My name's Ron Hett, I think you most know that. Okay, so at the, at this annual meeting in, a year ago, I asked the board to consider four things. And one was working with River City's Community Access to record and broadcast these meetings, and that they accomplished, great job. I asked them to develop an ordinance, or consider developing an ordinance for some control of outdoor wood burners or wood boilers, I guess they're called. And I see that's on, that's scheduled for a hearing on May thirteenth, so I'm going to say that's accomplished. I asked them to consider a resolution supporting the police and fire departments, and they've done that. I asked them to consider posting meeting notices on our website. And they've done that. Plus, there's the minutes on the website now. So everything I asked them to do a year ago, they've accomplished, so thanks for doing that. I've got a couple requests for, you're going to consider this year.
Bring them on.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to consider developing an alternate budget, right, at least one alternate budget, and that alternate budget would, would consider the use of the unused levy. Present us with at least two budgets at budget hearing time.
Okay, so in other words, the budget as we would prepare, and if there was any unused budget levy amount, you'd like to see a budget where that money was put somewhere and presented, is what you're saying? Okay, I understand you.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to consider working on cooperative boundary agreements. Make some budget for that.
that, and kind of get that going, I guess. The third one here is, and maybe this is being done, but I'm not sure, I televised the meetings, and particularly the annual meeting, which is this one here, and it's being done. Now, I don't know if this was normal process, or you happened to arrange for it, but this is great that, because this is an unusual type of meeting, and it's good for, you know, the community citizens, this is their only means of getting it, I guess. And also the budget hearings on the associated special town meeting that goes along with it. At least those two meetings arranged for the.
Give it.
Televised and those things. And the rest of these things are just kind of bookkeeping maybe issues, but I asked Ernie a while back, and I was sitting at a plan commission meeting, I guess, and they didn't have name tags, and I said, hey, it'd be great if everybody had name tags at every meeting, you know, because there's a lot of times that people in the audience don't know who the heck they were talking to. And I see last night at the plan commission meeting, they had name tags, and so accomplished in advance, I'd like that to continue. I'd like you to consider explaining the agenda items on the agenda, at least briefly. I know the board all, you know, the board gets a big package of what it's all about, and Kathy did a nice job the other night of explaining one of the issues, and a lot of us sitting in the audience have no idea what it is, and some of us watching on TV, I suspect, are the same thing. And I know you're limited by time, but a short explanation might help, I guess. Let's see, I'd like, maybe we have some guidelines for this, but now that we've got, now that we got the minutes, or the meeting agenda on the website, and we're working on putting the meeting minutes on there, I'm not too sure if we have a process as to how soon they get there. I noticed that this meeting wasn't on the website until a week or so ago, and now here we are here tonight approving it. Well, that's been five months, I guess, that, and if we post them, maybe we can just say draft, you know, but it's nice to see them out there, I guess. You spoiled me now that you've done such a good job getting them there, so. And Ernie, I'm gonna keep bugging you on this one, I guess, and Ernie has allowed public comment, I guess, first of all, you don't have to allow any public comment. You know, I'm talking about board meeting now, a board meeting. Not a committee meeting, but a board meeting. Not an annual meeting, but a board meeting. Ernie doesn't have to, the board doesn't have to allow any public comment at a meeting. He's graciously allowed, and before him, when everybody was talking at every agenda item, it took a lot of time. And sometimes that got a little bit nerve rattling, I guess, but Ernie's process here is to allow comments at the beginning of the meeting, and I've been bugging him a little bit to consider at least offering one more slot, and that would be at the end of the meeting, and maybe so the citizens can follow up on a comment or present an agenda item, maybe. So that's what I got here, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the, Gil?
Can we step up?
You don't have to.
Two things that Ron brought up there, I definitely agree with his thought regarding public input at board meetings. It's very difficult for citizens to come to a board meeting and even know what you're going to talk about. Maybe we would totally change our mind and not even want to speak prior to the meeting if we knew the direction the board was going to go. So having a chance to say something at the end of the meeting, I think, would be very appropriate. The other thing I would definitely disagree with Ron on is boundary agreements. I think you as board members are not representing the citizens of this township if you agree with another municipality to allow them to take or annex land from the township. I think you really need to consider that, because the city's gonna annex whether we want them to or not. And by putting a formal agreement in place, you're just giving them the green light to go ahead and take one more roadblock away from the city when they want to annex land, even though that landowner may not want to be annexed. I think you need to consider that a little seriously.
There are several different types of boundary agreements nowadays that can protect areas, but one of the things I've always said, and we were involved in a boundary agreement early in my years of being on the board, in the late 90s, early 2000s, and the crunch came to a head, Mr. Buss and myself said, who do we want to kick out of the town?
Yeah, exactly.
Tom and I said, so we ended up closing down the conversation with the city, because the city had ideas, and God forbid anybody knows how far they wanted to go, but it was a long ways. We chose to stop those discussions. Now, the boundary agreement process is a little more refined. We may want to start, take a look at it again, but it's not necessarily saying that we would finish it, because we might get some of those same hurdles coming up that us as board members don't want to tell you, you, or you. You're gonna be in the city next week, or next year, or five years down the road. There are some things, we're hoping that Reggie, the Economic Development Growth Initiative, that will help us. Dan is involved in that, or will be, we hope, soon. We are in our own little mind, just for information for you folks, wanting to promote ourselves a little bit. We have a lot of commercial land. If a business wants to come in and does not need to have sprinkler service, or a massive septic discharge, we can accept them in our town and provide them. Currently, we have, Chris, it was 192 businesses?
Yeah.
In the town?
All of them.
Believe it or not? And we have right close to 100 additional ones that are home-based businesses, where they have no traffic coming in and out. So there is a fair amount of business in our town, and we want to keep promoting that. This community is one of very few communities in the area that is totally fiber-wired. And a lot of the type of businesses that you could get into this town would be IT type of businesses, where they're gonna sit at a desk, do some work. We've got a little business that's going on 36th Street, they are writing some property now. It's an IT business, they're doing software. So that's the type of growth that we can get in our town, and we're gonna target it, see if we get it. Anything else?
Mr. Chen?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Ron, thank you. You brought up some good ideas. I just want to comment on two of them. One, you might have been reading my mind with, related to the name tags, I wasn't thinking name tags, but when we're sitting up here and looking at the audience that's attending the meetings and participating in the meetings, I don't often know everybody's names, and I've oftentimes thought, even if we went around and gave a shout-out of who we were, so that people start to become more familiar with names of those who do repeatedly show up and attend the meetings. So I would agree with your idea of trying to find some way of identifying who's who. And then the second comment I have is with regards to the minutes of the meetings posted. While I appreciate that you want to get the minutes out there as soon as possible, and even putting them in draft format, my years as clerk, I've been to many trainings where that's been more of a nightmare for the clerk than it's been a positive reaction, because oftentimes those minutes get out and they're not yet approved, and there could be clarifications or changes that need to be made. And even though they say draft format, that message is out there that might send a different intent. And so a lot of times, back in my era, I don't know, do you do the same?
I put them out there when I have them done.
Oh, you do?
Before they're approved.
So, see, and in my past history, my past life, it was to hold it until it was approved in case there were any changes.
Which puts the information out there a month late.
Yeah, it does.
So I do put the minutes out there when I have them finished.
And that's, I was, pardon me, I was finding, and I didn't take the opportunity to talk to her, because she's so darn busy anyway, but I figured if she'd get mad at me, she'd come call me or something like that. I was finding the consensus, it's all was done, you know, so I was trying to get some process to it, I guess, is what I was doing.
All right, you're not hearing other business, there is no need for a motion adjourned. I'll call the meeting closed. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you coming out tonight.